You're back! How did it go with Futaba? I hear you've been keeping her company for the past few days. Thanks! Nice! But I found my way that I planned to do my stream run-through. Are you gonna be streaming Tears of a Kingdom? Uh, hold on, whoa, whoa, whoa. A criminal who uses the Metaverse to carry out their crimes. This is no longer a matter we can ignore. Especially because... They might be, uh, the ones who killed Futaba's mom. To be honest, I had considered the idea that they might be behind only the rumored psychotic breakdowns. But now it appears as though this person is killing people as well. Technically, they're making people have mental shutdowns, which then caused them to die. That's what happens when, uh, you kill someone's shadow, yeah? Mm-hmm. We were worried about it back when with Kamashita and Maroami, remember? Psychotic breakdowns and mental shutdowns. It would make sense if the same person was behind them. The news never talked about the victims dying, so people only would, uh, know about the break- uh, breakdowns. I will once I beat Breath of Wild, but it don't plan on doing... But... I'll, I don't plan on doing it anytime soon because of the, just the popularity. I'd rather do it when it's less popular and finish my first, my run-through first. Ah, fair enough! Hey, I don't blame you! By all means, take your time! I would like to see you play Tears of a Kingdom on stream, I would like to see that! Uh, so this shit's serious, eh, eh, seriously a case? If that's for real, whoever is doing it is some kind of assassin. I'm gonna beat the crap out of them! I would suggest we be more cautious going forward as well. We still don't know much even about, uh, Metaverse Navi. NAV. It's just going to be like, "Oh, why you are you dead? Why are you dead?" Hey, that didn't, I mean, yes! Partially, yes! I mean, hey, ay! Just say it! I'm kidding! Oh, no, but I did, as I would like to see you play Tears of a Kingdom though. It would be nice though. That is true. I wonder why, uh, that exists. There was a man in my dreams, the guy with the long nose. Did you ever end up ordering the books for the Tears of a Kingdom? No, I did not! I did not! I meant to do that! Uh... I, I'm gonna, I got some financial stuff I gotta take care of, so that's why I had to put a pause on ordering it, which I felt bad. But, I'm gonna order it soon. Maybe by the end of the summer guaranteed. Well, yeah, cuz, eh, eh, I pre-ordered, uh, it and was so pissed because it kept getting delayed. Cuz everybody fucking wants one, that's why, that's, uh, that's what I'm assuming! You know? I did want it to pre-order the, uh, Tears of a Kingdom book, but... Uh, uh, I'm, I'll do it at the end of summer, now, now to get there, I didn't pre-order it then. Um... Because I probably would've forgot about it. And now, it would've been delayed. It would've been funny if I ordered mines and I got it before you, that would've been funny. A Dream? You still have a sleep, dude? I wonder if that criminal is using the app too? Futaba? This seems like your area of expertise. Do you know anything about it? No, I'd never heard any, uh, ne- I'd never even heard of it before. I mean, it's not really even an app. I would've been fucking pissed! It's more like a mysterious app-like thing. I see. It's okay though. I might not have, uh, I might not know much about, uh, NAV, but I can still navigate you guys on the path to victory. I'll guide you to whatever criminal you are looking for. Mehehe! You can, you can rely on me. Awesome dude! You're way more reliable than Mona! Another message, damn! Hey Link! You live in Yongeta- uh, Yonget, right? You know about the old movie theater there? Well, the old couple that runs it is apparently getting threatened by Lance, uh, Specu- uh, Speculators. There's, they're trying to say the theater's in the way of some building they want to put up. We can't let, uh, we can't just let them force those people out, right? Yeah, cuz I was expecting it June 19th. Now it's July 10th. What the fuck, a whole ass month? Yeah, I know, yeah. I'm gonna order mines at the end of summer then. Yeah, screw that, nah, I'm not waiting that long. Ah, man, that really fucking sucks! Why is it delaying it though? Did you, eh, did you look up why they delayed, eh, they delayed it or not? I feel bad for them. Right? No? Huh, interesting. That old couple is so afraid of the threats that they don't even want to open theirs. Their theater. Dude, what is going on? Try, uh, I just know it didn't come, uh, eh, it didn't come out of my thing yet. So it didn't take it out of, did they, uh, take the money though? I'm pretty sure they had to take the money. Oh, wait. Um, hm, there might have been a change in momentum because of all Medjet stuff. If you want to go, now would be the right time, let's discuss with everyone at the hideout. Who's muscling in Yonget Chaya? By the way, your phone was vibrating, make sure you check it. Dude, did I get the name? Uh, anyways, our target is a guy named, uh, Yasu Jok- Jokichi. Let's drive him off and save that old couple's theater. Um... I know we just finished talking about it, but... Here's a photo I took today. Ah! I'm in there too? No money until it is shipped. Hey, that's a good thing though! That's a good thing! At least they didn't take your money and say, "Fuck y'all, we're keeping your money and don't ever get it." Watch it delayed again till August? Dude, I'm, I'm overlaughed so hard! I'm sorry, but that would be funny! I'm in there too, uh, you look like you're having fun, Futaba. Aren't a pretty cool camera woman? Is this what it's like to feel photogenic? Ah... You're not used to looking good in pictures? It certainly is a fine shot. I get you. Indeed, this picture has even captured all of the architecture uh, grandeur of my sent castle. I'll take your word for it, man. Alright. Alrighty, what are we doing today? I would be pissed, but it hasn't changed in a while. Eh, but that's a good thing! That's a good, so you might be getting it July 10th. Let me know how, if, if you do get it, I want pictures, I wanna see pictures! Uh, today... What's playing at the theater right now? There is a theater up here, right? Uh, you cannot quick travel to Shinjuku, uh, Movie Theater? Uh, wow, this theater is humongous, I wonder what they're showing? Right now, eh, we're just in time to see Sarah Manum. It's a story about a robot cat who rents out useful tools but charges a high premium for his service. Uh, actually... We are gonna watch a movie! But it's gonna be back home. Yes! Cuz I gotta increase my guts, that's the one thing I'm lacking at. I maxed out, eh, as you saw, I maxed out charm! Wait, surprise, surprise! Well, I'm not fucking surprised actually that we maxed out charm! Honestly! Let's watch the DVD! But how much charm we got that one section of the game? Yeah! Alright, we're gonna go ahead and watch the other one. How much was it for the book anyways? Wasn't it like 40 bucks? It's a story about an editor trying to rush a struggling writer to meet his deadline. That editor is terrifying, no one, no one could finish that many pages in such a short time. Does he even stand a chance? I got it for 26? 26 bucks, really? After shipping and handling? That writer was given an impossible task, but he kept on writing until his fingers bled. Maybe if you earn a thing or two about guts from watching this drama. Nice! Oh my god, that's what I needed to do! We done it guys, we got guts! I really thought I had to do another thing for guts, but I guess not, we were like right there. I, I'm actually surprised! And we maxed out charm! I think in my current playthrough that I'm doing for my wa- for my, uh, walkthrough, for my notes, I think I maxed out knowledge before I maxed out charm. I gotta double-check. But yay, we got fucking guts down! Yay, we got guts, cool! Alright, it, let's get to bed, meow meow. That's not bad, 26 bucks.
Oh, hey, uh, I, I know this is out of the blue, but, uh... Like, could we all meet up at LeBlanc tomorrow? Ah, sweet!
That worried tone. Could he still have summer vacation homework left to do?
Was that Morgana? Whoa, how did he know?
I actually called it?
Anyway, I, I've already hit up Makoto and the others. I'll be counting on you to get me through this tomorrow.
You gotta be kidding. Might as well get some sleep while we can. That black thing was... Me? That can't be true. I'm supposed to be human! I should be. If we get rid of the distortion in the depths of Mementos, I'm sure, I'm sure it'll all be fine! Sorry, did I wake you up? Oh, um... My sunburns were hurting and that woke me up. I was absorbing all the sunlight because I'm black. Don't you get it? It's all natural! By the way, it's not like I'm bothered by this or anything. But hypothetically speaking, okay? What would you do if I turned out to be some weird... Thing? I'd be bothered by it!
Fucking racist, that's racist cuz he, cuz Morgana said I'm bla- cuz I'm black? Atlas knew what they were doing! I'm just saying, fucking Atlas knew what they were doing!
If what I saw from earlier is true, is it okay for me to stay with the Phantom Thieves? And even if I'm with the team, I'm useless at the moment. It's nothing. Well, I've gotten pretty used to my life as a cat too. And to be frank, this storage room isn't bad either. Then again, I can't wait to turn back to being a human so I can move out. Maybe I'll live a life of luxury in a suite on the highest floor! Hmm... But rather than becoming some weird thing, maybe staying as a cat isn't so bad either. You and me made a deal, yeah? That means I can stay here. Isn't that right? Thought so. Don't forget what you just said, okay?
Alright!
Come on! Let's hurry up and get to sleep. Night! It'll be fine, right? Oh, I'm done.
As for me, I'm done for.
Talk about a cliched way to end your summer vacation? I can't believe you hadn't even touched your homework until last night.
Well, everyone's free to spend their time as they choose. I guess some people just can't help themselves.
I'm sorry!
Come on, I think he's learned his lesson. More importantly, why don't you folks take a break?
Boss! Oh, you're a lifesaver!
I'm gonna go pick up some groceries. Mind the shop for a bit.
The sports club has aggressively applied kinostheseology to the team's practices. By incorporating their lab's findings on human efficiency into the training regimen, they have developed a...
Oh, that reminds me! Isn't there a female athlete from our own school who's made the news?
An athlete? Oh, do you mean the one in gymnastics?
Yeah, her! The one everyone's saying is super cute!
Oh yeah, Yoshizawa, right? Wasn't she gonna be in the summer meet? Or is that already over?
Ah... About that...
Makoto?
Well, I just happened to overhear a couple teachers discussing it when I was heading to school the other day. Yoshizawa-san's results in the meet... They weren't exactly stellar.
I see.
There seemed to have been a great many people expecting her success there. It's gotta be tough for her.
Yeah! Ain't there one more meet left this year in gymnastics though? Shit must be rough right now! But if she can nail that one, who cares what anybody at school says?
Oh! That also reminds me. So, I just so happened to bump into Mishima-kun before summer vacation started.
And?
He seemed really mad. I asked him what was wrong and he showed me some posts on an underground site about our school. It pretty much said the school's planning to abandon any honor student who isn't actively making shujin look better.
Whoa, wait a sec.
There was no name, and it sounded like just another rumor at first. But could this be about Yoshizawa-san?
Who knows? Still, ever since the case with Kamashita, the school's been frantically trying to improve its public image, right? At the very least, this abandonment of honor students would fall in line with the school's real mission. I can't deny the possibility that they would do this to Yoshizawa-san. They dump all their hopes onto their athletes, and if they don't cut the mustard, they're out like the rest of the trash, huh?
Regardless of whether it's true or not, such behavior is extremely self-serving.
Just like we've thought this whole time! There's still tons of shit wrong with society!
Yeah. We don't know what'll happen to Yoshizawa's spot on the team, but at the very least, we can keep up our efforts to prevent the worst-case scenario.
Next up, our spotlight's on a topic everyone's talking about: The Phantom Thieves incidents. The Phantom Thieves shocked the world by silencing a globally notorious activist group. Their popularity goes beyond our own borders, with foreign media following them closely as well. Many are heralding them as dark heroes and gentleman thieves for a new age.
Whoa! This is getting pretty crazy! So the whole world really knows about us?
Man, it's hot!
Enough already, damn! All everyone talks about anymore is the Phantom Thieves. Who are they, whether they're good or bad? Starting to give me a headache. So the more famous we get, the more Mementos opens up, yeah? I can't get that out of my head. And that's why you couldn't focus on your homework until today, right? Yeah, exactly! Sounds like an ex- and sounds like an excuse to me. Still, I had, I've been wondering about that too, I wonder why it works like that? Does Morgana know anything?
I don't know. I don't even remember how I first learned about Mementos.
He doesn't seem to know. I see! Then there's no way to find, for us to find out. It will more, it will likely become clear if we continue as Phantom Thieves. The most important thing now is the identity of that criminal using the Metaverse. That might be the one, uh, person who killed my mom! I'm gonna find them, no matter what it takes. You know, we used to be lacking in quite a few areas. But now that we have Futaba helping us, a great number of possibilities are now available. Yes, we gained a fantastic addition to our team in the most unexpected manner. Ah, you're making me blush! We'll be counting on you, Futaba! This feels way better than having that dumb cat guide us. Damn! Oh yeah, uh, when are you gonna ask about the paper bag at the airshop? Yeah, soon! Yeah, but first, we're gonna do a little bit of crossword. Alrighty, it's techie term for e-infiltration. Hacking! I got it, the answer is hacking! Uh, while often used to refer to criminal behavior, hacking actually encompass encompasses an entry of protected technology, whether or not the intent was malicis. Hackers out to do good, uh, are sometimes referred to as white hats. While hackers who engage in malicisus, malice- malasious activities are called black hats. Ah, even I couldn't figure that one out! Yay! Eh, we may do that here in a bit, actually. Cuz now... We are gonna go ahead and take on now that everything's ranked four with my social stats. We're gonna go take care of the Big Bang Challenge. You haven't done that in a while. What? Yes, we are! Welcome to the Big Bang, open 24/7, I wanna take the challenge. At this time, you can take the Big Bang Challenge for only 500 yen, would you like to try it out? You might be able to gain more, uh, gain some guts if you do the challenge. I think you can probably do it as you are now. As you are first made, the ultimate mission awaits. The challenge will, uh, cost, uh, 500 yen. Take the challenge. Certainly! Now then, go take a seat and good luck! Thank you for taking the Big Bang Challenge again. This is the first task before you can ascend to the captain, uh, rank of captain. Our store's benment, uh, behemoth burger stands in your way. The meat, uh, levithen proportions. Holy shit! The Cosmic Burger Tower! It, it's massive, I'm honestly at a loss of four words. This burger is the ultimate embodiment of the limitless nature of space. The volume, the flavor, the calories. Every aspect of this burger is a star miracle. If you can succeed, uh, at eating the entire thing, you'll be presented with the extraordinary gift. I wonder if anyone's ever actually finished it? Well then, it's time to get the 30-minute Big Bang Challenge started. Ready? Go! Oh my god, look at me go! It looks like there's a whole led, uh, of lettuce in here. The burger's already cold. I'm rooting for you, and remember, nobody will think of any less of you if you give up partly way, though. I somehow ate the whole thing! Yay, we completed it! Psh, confetti! You, you did it, you, you've done it again! My sincerely, my sincerest congratulations on completing the final challenge! Oh, that was the final challenge, that's right! Since you've managed to topple the Cosmic Town Burger, I present to you the highest ranked certi- uh, certification available here, the Captain Badge. Nice! And to the Burger Baron who defeated this challenge, we present to you our world-famous Big Bang Burger. On the house, we hope you've enjoyed the taste of victory. 10. You are hereby promoted to the rank of captain, no more challenges await you. But please do the challenge again and show us, uh, how, uh, show us how blunt you are. All of us here at Big Bang Burger sincerely await your return. So yeah, that was the final challenge, bada bing bada boom! Uh, you beat the Cosmic Burger, uh, Cosmic Town Tower. You were so admirable, taking on such a daunting task with that intense level of courage. What is that? Gut, that's 3. Your pace, your strategy of using well-timed drinks and just a speculator, the way you devour it, everything is perfect. What's perfect? That's 3 for knowledge, right? Yeah, what's 3 for knowledge? I believe it's, uh... Oh, we can't max out charm, uh, charm, yeah, we maxed it out. No fucking way, we fucking completed! Proficiency! Look at that! We are on a roll, guys, we completed proficiency! Well, actually, actually, I am surprised! And at the same time, I'm not! So that's good! Your proficiency has increased from Masterful to Transcendent. Come on, we should head home, I'm full just from watching you. Nice!
I never expected what happened to Futaba's mother would be connected to those incidents in the city. We can't leave this be! Though this scoundrel has the same power as us, they're triggering people's mental shutdowns. If they truly exist, who can stop them? Only us! This is getting interesting! We've got a new addition to the team, so it's time I flex my veteran skills!
Uh-oh, yeah! I'm surprised we maxed out proficiency and charm, I don't think I have that in my current playthrough. Hey, we need to talk, come downstairs. Come downstairs! What is it? I don't know, you tell me. I think I'm a little bit further ahead in my, uh, in this play-
Hey! Get ready, we're going out for lunch, just the three of us. You don't have any plans, right? Just come on, it'll be my treat. Not only can Futaba go out now, but your summer break's almost over. We gotta do something.
I asked especially for sushi? You better be thankful! This place is supposed to be super delicious too! Sushi? Take me with you! I didn't get to eat the takeout sushi last time, remember?
Man, that thing never stops meowing, does it?
Tell him to bring me along!
Wait, does it wanna come with us or something? I do feel sorry for it though. Well... I guess I don't mind bringing some sushi home.
He knows me so well! Let's see. I want some medium-fat tuna, fatty tuna, salmon roe, anago, and, and... Oh, are you gonna be able to remember all this? You might wanna take notes.
So... How is it? Good?
Mmm, delicious!
Don't wolf it down like that! No one's gonna take your food! What did I tell you? Drink some tea.
Restroom!
Huh? Oh, oh, restrooms! They're that way. What a busy girl! Back in the day, she, her mother and I used to go eat out often. This brings back memories. I had completely forgotten about it too.
That was close! I thought I was gonna die! Well, time to resume!
You're still going to eat?
Uh, I'm all full, I'm throwing in the towel.
Which is it? I'm gonna use the restroom and then pay the bill. Check, please.
Coming right up!
When I got into middle school, my mom and Sojiro took me out to eat sushi to celebrate. That sushi was so good. Today's was pretty good too. I hope the three of us can come again sometime. When should we do this again? I wish she could've had today's sushi too. I wanna find out what happened to mom. I won't forgive the guy who triggered her mental shutdown, so you better help me out.
Hundred twenty thousand yen? You're joking, right?
Looks like we won't be getting sushi to go. Welcome home, I've been waiting for you! Huh? Wait, where's my sushi? Where's my fatty tuna? Where's my enago?
The sushi was so delicious, we even ate the ketchup. God damn it, you were, we were always supposed to tell him! If only Soji had more money. Listen, Morgana, that wasn't supposed to go that way! There's actually one place I wanna go more than sushi, any idea what it is? Video game store? Uh... I have no idea. I'm not surprised, this is what people call out of the blue. I wanna go to Akihabara. I wanna buy a game, but I'm scared to do it alone, do you think you can help me? Uh, I guess. Of course! You're a nice guy. Okay, it's late, so let's just meet there, okay? I know how to ride the train after that trip to the beach, so I can get there fine. Well then, I'll be waiting.
Wait, we're meeting in Akihabara? Is Futaba really going to be okay?
No.
We'd better get over there.
No. Akihabara. Uh... Also known as Akiba. The district is miss, is maker of tech and otaku goods. The world's largest electronic store can be found here. You can now travel to Akihabara. You can now send by people, yeah, whatever.
Is this where we're supposed to be meeting? Is she not here? Try checking around.
Are you all by yourself? Where did you come from?
I... Hey, over there!
Did you run away from home? What's wrong, little girl?
That looks bad. What are you gonna do? Yeah, hurry up!
Well, can you come down to the station with me for now? Huh? Who are you?
Hey!
Do you know this girl? You're not lying, are you? Very well.
Futaba, are you okay? Sorry, I thought I conquered my fears back at the beach. What happened? There wasn't anyone I knew with me, so I panicked. Felt like my heart was gonna pop. I got so scared all by myself, then I just sort of curled up into a ball. Then all these people started staring at me, and the police came, and then it was all over. Look, Futaba, if you're ever in trouble, just call this guy. Okay. I feel kinda calm when we're this close. You're okay being like this, right? Maybe. Couldn't even go buy a game by myself. I'm a failure. Futaba. But I'm okay outside as long as it's with him. Is he some kind of key item? Please, be my key item, I'll try and get better at navigation if you do! For reals? Then it's a deal!
We were impressed with the intel gathering skills of the Phantom Thieves as well. We also know that this would have been impossible unless you had a skilled hacker. Who was doing this?
I am thou. Thou art I. Thou hast acquired a new vow. It shall become the wings of rebellion that break it by chains of captivity. With the birth of the hermit persona, I have obtained the winds of blessing that shall lead to freedom and new power.
Alright.
Alright, now that that's over with, let's go! Where? Need, buy, game! Weren't you bawling your eyes out just a second ago? Yeah, but I have my key item now! Victory conditions met, come on, let's roll!
Welcome home, where were you two?
Akihabara.
What? That's incredible, Futaba!
I, I guess.
I just hope you can keep that up. Maybe you'll even be able to go to high school someday.
Yeah.
Well, that's enough of that. I bet you're exhausted after dealing with all those people, huh? Let's get you to bed. Hey, we're gonna head back.